Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Windsor Board of Education Tuesday, June 6th to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is Audience to Visitor. Ms. Daly, if you could read your script.
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you're called on, you'll be prompted with you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. As usual, if somebody does call in and they don't see it, the same rule applies in-house to it. The two and a half minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will hold a red card up briefly, and then at the three-minute mark, he'll hold it up, indicating it's time to wrap up your remarks. If someone's on the phone, and they can't, obviously on the phone, unless telepathic, they won't see the red card, and so Mr. Lockhart may have to interject that it's time to wrap up their remarks at the three-minute mark. Is there anybody first in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight? And just to let people know, there's not, as a special meeting, there is not a second Audience to Visitor, so this is the only opportunity.
James Madison from Fitzmorris Circle. I would like to say I really appreciate Dr. Hill as superintendent. I think he's doing a great job, and I appreciate his office and their quick response to all my requests. I used to FOY it, but I don't even need to do that anymore. They're just awesome, so I really appreciate that. But let me be brutally partisan, and I want to address my caucus directly. I'm very worried about the state of education in the United States. When I look at something like San Francisco where they destroyed math, and I look at someplace like New York City where they eliminated things like the challenge program because instead of asking how to bring kids up, they decided to lower the bar down. You look at all the lessons of the 20th century about Marxism, and yet you still see leaders, administrators, and superintendents who push Marxism all over the place. You look at trans kids, kids who are being pushed into the trans identity, and you say to them, oh, you can be whatever you want to be. No, you're going down a path of millions of dollars in medical intervention for your whole life till the day you die. You're going to be sterile, you're never going to experience orgasm, as if kids can understand this. This is the kind of stuff being taught in schools around this country. The great news is, it's not being taught here. The biggest thing I can think of is we made world history optional. Okay, fine. If you have a GSA group in high school, yeah, okay, fine. This place that we have here in Windsor, from a right-wing perspective, is pretty awesome. My biggest fear is if we lose Dr. Hill, the next person coming through that door, odds are, might be crazy, right? If you look at people who, in San Francisco, New York, some of the really big blue cities, who might apply for the job if he leaves, it scares me as a person on the right. I actually love Dr. Hill from a conservative perspective, because he's quite sane. And we have a sane bunch of Democrats, and the odds are that if he ever left, we actually might do okay, or we might not. There might be some frightening people who really push these things, that really destroyed math in San Francisco, that really destroyed challenge courses in New York City, that really are pushing Marxism as if the 20th century never happened, that really are pushing kids down to an identity path that has a social contagion fear. So I love Dr. Hill. I love him objectively, but I want to say, I really worry that if he leaves, and the next person who comes through the door, the army that marches through here with a whole lot of really scary positions that are happening, really happening throughout the United States, we could do a lot worse. So my hope is to keep Dr. Hill around for a long time. I like him as a conservative. So I think it's in our partisan interest to do it, and I objectively believe that he does a great job. I love his coffee talks. I love the fact that I can get information from him immediately. I also love that we have the Wash Dogs, which is a father-centric thing, which again, as a conservative, fathers matter, father figures, if that's what it takes. Love it. We have a lot of good things in this town. We even have things for the kids that are sponsored by churches as after-school meetings in the school, right? Some places will tell you that's separation church and state. I won't. I love it. So I think we're doing great. I look at what's happening in the country. As a conservative, I fear a lot of the most extreme stuff I see. It really is happening. I'll send you the links if you don't believe me. But I look at this town, we're doing a solid job, and if he ever leaves, we're going to regress to the mean, and it could be very scary. Keep this guy as long as you can, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board tonight?
I'll speak up really quickly. So I'm very new to the town of Windsor. I moved here from New Jersey.
Your name and address, thank you. And if you could state your name for the record.
Jeanette Angel. Like I said, I'm fairly new. I just moved down here in April 1st of this year from Garfield, New Jersey. And I've gotten to know Dr. Hill. I really appreciate his coffee talks. And I want to say, I have two kids with special needs, and the difference in only two months in this school district has been amazing. And I could only say it starts from the leader all the way down to everybody else. So I'm super grateful for whatever it is that he's doing. I don't know exactly what it is. I just wanted to voice it, because I'm, again, fairly new, but I've seen the difference on how children with IEPs are actually included and the IEPs are actually being followed. Thus, my experience was different in another state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board? Seeing and hearing none. Is there anybody online, Ms. Daly?
There are attendees, but there are no hands raised. There are also no comments in the Q and A feature.
Then without objection, close Audience to Visitor. Audience to Visitor is closed. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education evaluation of the superintendent and a discussion of the superintendent's contract and compensation. Dr. Hill's contract indicates that evaluations are usually done in executive session, but he has the right to do so in open session, in public session, and I believe he's chosen to do that tonight. Correct. So what, the way I would like to have this handled is similar to what we did last year in executive session, where Dr. Hill first gives a presentation to us. We already have talking points that he's sent to all board members, so we know what he's already sent to us. But if he wants to flesh any of that out or add any other things, this is the opportunity. And after that, we will go through board members to either comment, or if they have questions, something they didn't understand in his presentations, or questions about it. And after that, we will go through a process of motions regarding his contract.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If it's acceptable, once we are done with the evaluation with the superintendent, would a recess be in order so that myself and Mr. Panos can speak with our caucuses to see exactly where they are with the motions in regards to where we're going to be, so that we're not going through a long list of motions this evening unnecessarily, if that's acceptable with you and Mr. Panos.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Panos?
Yeah.
So we do a short recess after that? Do we need a motion to that?
We may not have all the same view on this.
That's fine. We just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I just want to make sure respectfully that you have a chance to speak with your caucus. I have a chance to speak with mine's. You and I come together with the understanding, we're not going to be here all night making motions after motion after motion. Want to make sure that we are, come to some clear consensus and to be able to have the discussion and not take all night with it. So that's the premise of where I would like to be, if that's acceptable to you, not killing any discussion.
You would have these discussions, so we would just caucus with it.
You would caucus with your caucus. We would caucus.
And then the two of you would come together just to say where you are, not that we have an agreement of any kind.
If you don't want to recess, that's fine. We can have those discussions in open session.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to start off with my opening statement. So my focus for Windsor Public Schools has been and continues to be culture and academic performance. I believe one drives or inhibits the other. When I speak of culture, I am referring to the collective will and efforts of all stakeholders, focusing on doing what's best for all students in all situations. As a result of this culture shift, we will see an improved academic performance on the part of all of our students. A key component to this culture shift is the continued embedding of SEL principles and practices in our curricula and support activities. The 2022-2023 school year has been a year of real growth for the district. I am extremely proud of my staff across the district. As you can see, I invited the leaders to be here tonight, one, to learn and experience, to see what superintendent does during an evaluation and how that whole interaction works. But also, the things that I'm going to talk about are not the things that I've necessarily done as an individual at all, but they were done and accomplished through my leaders and the staff. So you said you went, a parent mentioned she didn't know how it works. I'm not magical, so I can't do it by myself. I do it through all these leaders, and they in turn get their staff to do the work. I've never been one to take the credit from anyone else, and I won't begin to do that now. So I am thankful for my staff across the entire district. While it has not been easy or comfortable, staff have consistently stepped up to meet the challenge of growing their students academically. A goal I set for myself and shared with my leaders was to celebrate the small victories, since that is not the norm for me. And I want to thank publicly Principal Jorgensen for helping me focus on setting that goal, because I'm really not good at celebrating the small victories, but I have been working really hard on that one this year. I trust you will see the improvements I am speaking about as you read through this self-evaluation. As superintendent of schools, I expect Windsor Public Schools to be a model for other districts and even other states. My intention is to continually strive towards this goal. I've been very public about the positioning as an alliance district. I've also been public about having figured out how to get that $582,000 that comes along with being the Lions District. But I've never been a kid or a student who's liked any kind of negative connotation or descriptor attached to myself. I've always tried to exceed and excel in every area of my life, and I feel the same way about this school district. And I intend, as I lead it, to get it to exceed and excel expectations of our own selves each and every year, to do better and better. And I want Windsor to be spoken of in the same breath as all the other districts that are spoken of in Connecticut at the highest levels. It's not a dream. It's my goal and what I'm working for every day with my leaders. And at another point, we'll talk about actual goal-setting, because this will be the second year that we've done the goals this way. And while I'm okay with listing out a bunch of things that have been accomplished throughout the year, it's actually not a formal self-evaluation of goals that were set previously. And so I want to make sure that we move forward next year with an actual goal-setting process. And I have a process in mind, and we will discuss that later, but I just wanted to bring that up. First section, so for the audience, those listening and my leaders as well, we basically are following the various sections of responsibilities in the superintendent's contract. So these aren't goals, again, that were set. These are the areas of responsibility in the superintendent's contract. So I just named some accomplishments under each. I will not read the exhaustive lists under each one, but we'll name a few. And so as I go through it, each one, I'll do the same thing, unless you would like me to stop in each category for questions in each category. Mr. President?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Stop in each category?
That's fine, just.
Okay.
Yep.
So the first section, educational leadership. The superintendent of Windsor Public Schools ensures the success and achievement of all students by guiding the development and implementation of a shared vision of learning, strong organizational mission, and high expectations for student performance. So some of the key highlights here were accessibility to the superintendent for all stakeholders through an open-door policy via appointment. When I say open door, so folks can meet with me in my office, my conference room, they can make an appointment. Those appointment requests have definitely declined over these three years. As we've heard through Audience to Visitors, I believe the coffee talks have been quite successful, so much so that I know colleagues across the state and the nation, from when I attend conferences with other superintendents, have actually taken on this same practice. So it gives the superintendent an opportunity, for those who are in our public who still don't know, it's the opportunity for me to have conversations with all community members once a month. Some of the meetings will be in the morning, other meetings will be in the evening, and we can discuss all topics. Sometime, there are topics that are hot topics, so to speak, and I'll address those. But also, all participants and attendees are able to ask whatever questions that they have at top of mind. My understanding and my belief here with this system is that we avoid the social media discussion groups. I find, in my experience of 31 years in education, especially now with the advent of social media so heavily, that people really don't know all the facts, and so an opinion takes off and it just flies around social media. I have no problem answering people's questions, and if I don't have the answer at the coffee talk, I guarantee a person an answer within 24 hours or less. And so they know they are getting the answer from the superintendent, the honest answer. No one else is dressing it up. And I found that that's been pretty successful with folks in the community. Weekly meetings with district administrators, excuse me, with the district's administrative team to review procedures and protocols, answer questions on policy, et cetera, and provide teachable moments to the team. So I want to be accessible to my team. We are constantly looking to adapt, so I can't tell you that, you know, from year to year, every single meeting, the way we do it, will look the same, as I'm always looking to find greater efficiencies. Monthly meetings, they're held with myself and Ms. Batchelder, with the WEA officers and the WASA officers. In short, teachers' union and the administrators' union. We hold monthly meetings with them. These meetings help us learn about issues that are percolating, or those that actually got resolved, or any questions that we may have, or some information we want to share with the unions, so we can go through those particular officers. And I believe that it's given us a much better relationship with those officers and those unions. And again, I'm in constant contact with other superintendents across the state and the country, and we don't have as many of the issues and the grievances that you would see in many other districts. And I think a big part of that is the fact that we have this relationship, and we're constantly working on it. Ongoing monitoring of each school's staff for a purpose of improving climate and culture in their respective buildings. And again, I won't continue to read this list out, but one of the big things was the, finally, the full appointment of a new Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, and I thank the board again for appointing Dr. Haiti. She took on the role in an acting capacity early December, and I believe we have seen incredible growth and gains. And the direction that we're moving is definitely positive, and I attribute a big part of that to her ideas and vision for how we can best move and change the outcomes that we've had for some years. Next, I'll look at, oh, I'll stop right there, because that's before I get to the buildings. Any questions in that section before I hit the buildings?
Any questions regarding those items that he's mentioned?
No.
No? Okay. So just a few building achievements for a 2022-2023 school year. And again, for the public and the board, we know in September, we will have a full review of the academic performance of this year. So that will include all results for all tests and assessments for the district and broken-down by schools as well. So that presentation will happen in September. But there are some highlights, and again, one of my goals was to celebrate small achievements as we go along. So at Paquonic School, the academic kudo here is, as of 5/10/23, 84% of students are at or above grade level in reading. 74% are at or above grade level in math, as measured by iReady. The goal was 70% at or above. And the note is at this time, because we were still gathering information when I prepared this to give to you, so please understand that that's why some of the notes or the commentary looked like it was prior, because it was. And so, but the final results will all be put out in September. But we were definitely moving in the right direction. Culture-wise, as of 5/10, 97% of families responded favorably to families being connected and engaged on the family survey. This is an increase of 3.2% from the prior year. Needless to say, that's an incredible percentage for families to be satisfied, and you look for family satisfaction. And on the decimeni, at least 92% of students were identified as being typical or having strength in overall social and emotional competence. So this is looking at our SEL work. This is a 4% increase from the prior year. Area of growth, 12.3% of students are identified as chronically absent. While this is close to our goal of 12%, and a 12% decrease from the year before, we want to see this continue to drop. So this is something that you will hear some more about later, but we've continued to work on this, the chronic absentee issue, which is definitely was exacerbated, not only at the outset of the pandemic, but in all the time following. And we believe that we found some areas of self-in-house correction that can help us, or has helped us thus far with those numbers. At Oliver Ellsworth, under SCL, all areas of the family survey have significant increases in positive responses. For example, the percentage of families responding positively increased by 22 percentage points in regards to a positive learning environment. Again, just great increase. And it just shows the work that's going on in the school, as the leaders in the school work with their staff, and they listen to their parents, and they figure out, you know, what are the things we can change? You can't do everything, so I never tell the public, everything they ask for is going to be done. That's not realistic. But the things we can do, we work on, and we work on them in a timely fashion as well, so folks know we're not just waiting year to year. I don't believe in that. I believe if someone presents a problem to you, you can address it now. We start working on it now. Math and collaborative pairs, teachers work to increase knowledge of mathematics data and how to utilize that data in planning for differential, excuse me, differentiated instruction. Reading, kindergarten team fully implemented the Hegarty PA curriculum to address the gaps we were finding in our PA scores. One of our K teachers became our in-house Hegarty expert and has modeled lessons for our teachers and reading tutors. So one of the things that I love about this is that I believe we collectively have the talent in Windsor already to achieve the goals that I want to see, particularly academically. And so to see my leaders utilizing their staff, at times, staff are reluctant to want to be put out front, in front of people, or noted as being an exceptional person at something, or expert at something, or, as Batchelder's favorite word, a guru. So I like seeing that my leaders are pushing folks to step up and take the lead. And who better to learn from than your colleague, right? Because they should be vested in your success as well as you in theirs. And I'll just jump, because I don't want to just read each one individually as you have it in front of you, but I'll go to JFK. So while we've had some changes and things that happened at JFK, the staff still, you know, and I thank them personally last week, despite all that was going on, they kept grinding, they kept doing their job, and they kept doing what was best for students. And I thank them personally, and I want to thank them here in the public, again, for continuing to do what they did. Grade three tier one increased by 31 percentage points. You see that are there. Grade four, 11 percentage points, and grade five, 13 percentage points. Overall, all grade levels increased from September to January on the iReady reading assessment by over 10 percentage points since the fall. And that's what you're looking for in any school. You're looking for students coming in the fall, you assess them. You gain a baseline. This is where they are, right? And I tell everyone, I can't judge you by where your students are in September. They come in as they come in. They come in from the summer, they are where they are. Now, it's your job as the teacher and the leaders to move those students from September to January to your late spring assessment, whether it's in May or June, depending on where you are. iReady math data indicates grade three iReady math assessment showed a significant increase in tier one scores from 9% to 41% since the fall. So 32 percentage points gained. Again, that's incredible. That's incredible. I look forward to seeing these continued gains year over year. I'm not saying we will have this percentage of gains year over year, but if we continue to do the work the way we're doing it, we continue to focus on the data teams that have been, or the data meetings that have been set up. And I believe the staff have all bought into it now, so they understand, they see the relevance of it. They see how it's working to focus on what they can do to make changes that are necessary in order for all of their students to move. You'll continue to see these kinds of gains, and this is part of the culture shift and then the academic improvement that I'm talking about. If we all truly understand the data that's in front of us, we truly understand what our students' needs are, and we address those needs, then it's easy to move students, and everyone gets it. Moving on to Clover Street, celebrations here. We have a new principal this year, and I wanted to say publicly as well, I'm very proud. We have a new principal this year, and I wanted to say publicly as well, I'm very proud of Ms. Lee. She came in, there was some big changes last year, and she came in, I know she was nervous. And every time I talked to her, I said, "Stop being nervous." I don't know if she ever listened to me, but I was just going to keep saying, "Stop being nervous." She did a wonderful job. You know, when you come in as a leader, for those of you who have never led, it's easy for people to be on the sidelines and tell you, you know, "If I was there, this is what I would do. If I was there, this is what I'd do." I've been listening to people tell me what they would do if they were leading since I've been leading, since I was sixteen years old, and I'm fifty-four. So I really don't have a lot of faith in people who've never really led. I just listen to them. It's a nice sidebar conversation, because the pressure that's on you when you're out front, whether it's a military unit, whether it's a restaurant, and you're the chef supervisor, you're over the fries, it doesn't matter. When you're responsible for other people's actions and you're responsible for outcomes to others, that's a lot of pressure. And when you're new, you're not only learning your job, but you're having to keep the organization moving forward as well. And I think she did an incredible job with her staff. Sixteen percent increase in the number of students scoring in the Tier One range on the iReady. Five percent increase in the number of students indicating there are adults in the school, this is SCL, they were able to connect to. And a one-hundred-and-thirty percent increase in the number of families who completed the school climate survey. So not only is it important, as we saw in Paquonic, with a high percentage of people saying they're satisfied with the school, but getting an increase in the percentage of people completing the survey. I know as a building principal, a lot of times, greater than the actual score you receive from the climate surveys is the percentage of people who actually complete the survey. And when you have very few people who typically care to complete it, that in and of itself is typically an indicator of how they feel about that space or that school. So when you have that increase of people saying, "I want to complete it," they're telling you, "Hey, I want to say something about my school and my building." At Sage Park, celebration culture and climate. Fifty-five percent of the students in Sage Park indicated that they always belong and fit in at school. This is a six percent increase from the last school year. Parent-teacher home visits have tripled in the twenty-twenty, since, excuse me, from the 2021-2022 school year to the current year. That's another important piece. Again, the things that we don't necessarily think about upfront, but home visits, you're connecting with families. When you connect with families, in my experience over these thirty years, I realize you minimize the disruptions and the issues that a child could typically have in school. Because when something happens at home, the parent is much more likely to give the school a heads up. And something happens at school, the teacher or the administrator is a lot more comfortable giving the parent a heads up, like, "Hey, they're on the bus headed home, but today this happened." And everything's not necessarily a fight or some big issue, but it may have just been a conversation you had with a kid in the hallway, and you notice that they're a little off. And it's a good thing to let the parent know, because between the two groups, you can typically figure out what it is that's going on with the student and better help that student versus waiting for something to happen. Celebration academics, forty percent of the students were at or above grade level in reading, and thirty-seven percent were at or above grade level in math this winter on the iReady test administration. This is a slight increase from the last school year at that time. Again, I'm celebrating all the wins, because this is what we work for. If we continue to get these wins, all pluses are going to be positive. And what I mean by that is every win, every gain, each year, they just stack on top of each other. So they become cumulative. So this is definitely a big positive area. And I'll move on to the high school. Be sure you have the updated version now. I thank Dr. Haiti for adding these in this afternoon. But at the high school, celebration academics, eleventh-grade cohort increased their mean scores on the PSAT and SAT from eight-ninety-eight in the fall to nine-forty-three in the spring. Eleventh-grade students meeting the SAT benchmarks in math and reading increased from eighteen percent in the fall to twenty-three percent in the spring. The Windsor High School graduation rate increased from eighty-nine percent to ninety-one percent. And in doing so, we outperformed the state average of eighty-eight-point-nine percent. Windsor High School indicated twelve, which is art access, you know, in our accountability report. The average of fifty-six-point-nine percent, it's a two-point-seven percent increase from the prior year, and it's the highest it's been since 2018. Again, happy to see the positive gains. Are we setting back on our laurels? Absolutely not. We're going to continue to move forward, continue to look for greater gains each year. But it's just nice to note these gains. We signed an MOU with CCSU to increase our dual enrollment offerings in the CTE department. I know the vocational education was a big thing for the board, as well as myself. Like, we are in full agreement on that one, and I want to see our CTE department grow and grow and grow. And so this is one of those efforts that's helping us move in that direction. Celebration of culture, decreasing chronic absenteeism rates since the adoption of the new attendance tracking system when I was mentioning earlier. So when we looked at our chronic absenteeism, there was a committee that we had to have by state mandate. When we saw what was going on, and I think a big problem was, we really weren't understanding over these last few years, all the specific tenants of what constituted chronic absenteeism and, you know, how we could best track it and follow up. So once we figured that out, again, you don't know you have a problem till you notice you have a problem. And so now we've come up with a solution, and based on the solution that we've come up with, we see an incredible decrease and, you know, definitely, improving our standing on our accountability report, I'm sure, when it comes out from the state. And we're going to continue to get better. And again, some of the changes, I'm not saying all these changes were wholly embraced by everyone in the district, as I look at my leaders, right? Everything's not embraced, like, "Oh, great, Dr. Hill, another change." Right? I don't think people all say that. But as I tell them, sometimes there's a change that we need to do, and I need your opinion. And there are times there are changes I need to do, and I need you to just do it. So we're just doing some things that need to get done. Despite the fact that we may feel differently, like, "Hey, we were doing this, or we were doing that," but our results show that we weren't looking good. And at one point, I was very upset talking with the state. It looked like half our students didn't come to school every single day. I know I walk through buildings, none of them were empty. So how is this possible? So clearly, we weren't doing something right, we weren't tracking right. And I think we're now tracking the correct way, and I'm looking forward to see those numbers continue to drop. Areas of opportunity, continue to closely monitor our graduation rates and cohorts, starting in ninth grade to ensure proper coding in power school, as well as a proper tracking of graduation requirements to increase graduation rate. This is another one of those areas where I don't think everybody jumped for joy. When we went to counseling, and Dr. Haiti led this effort, so folks may have been bothered, because you've been doing something a certain way for a long time, it may have worked, but it doesn't always mean that it's the best way or the most efficient way. So we've tried again to look for efficiencies and to modernize our system. So now we have, Dr. Haiti created a spreadsheet that's set up to track our students and their courses. So as they take courses, the counselors can, you know, enter the courses upon completion, and it will continually keep a running record of the courses that students have met in terms of our graduation requirements. So let's say you took this particular math course, it satisfies ninth-grade math, I'm just being general right now. That's checked off, it's in that spreadsheet. And so you can quickly look at the sheet and see where a student stands. How many credits does he or she have? Where do they still need credits? Are they over in credits? And then what courses are they taking currently, so that they'll have credits at the end of the semester or the end of the year? Where will they stand? So you want those kinds of systems in this kind of environment versus paper systems where, you know, we're much more open to human error. Again, it was a change necessary, long in coming, didn't know. You don't know till you start asking questions, you start probing and digging. But it also makes me feel much better as a superintendent that we're ensuring that our students are on track more consistently, which should track then for greater graduation rates. And also, another thing I wanted to note that Dr. Haiti shared with me with the graduation rates, the summer graduates would help us, but we, for whatever reason, didn't enter those students in our system before the state took the data for its report. So we have a better system in place now, so to ensure that that does not happen to us, right? Again, I think that's no one's fault, it's just a system and the way we've been doing things. So, and the states come up with new ways of assessing us all the time, there's always something new. We just wanted to make sure that we can meet that threshold and increase our scores, because we're literally giving away points when, you know, you look like you're one number and we're actually another number. So we're working on that. So that's it for that first category. So I will stop now for questions.
Ms. Cant?
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Cantor?
That's okay, thank you. I did have a question on some of these elementary schools. For Oliver Ellsworth, there's no math measurement like there is for Paquonic. Is that because you're using another method? On the math, on page three, sorry. Go to page three and look at the bottom. And halfway down, you have Oliver Ellsworth, and there's no real math measurement like you provided in Paquonic?
Oh, so I didn't provide, yes.
Different system?
No, no, I can get you that. I didn't, I was doing highlights. I try not to make it look so mechanistic, like everyone was the same thing, just reporting different points. But, yeah, so all of this you've seen, actually, if you remember the presentation done by the leaders and Dr. Haiti.
Okay.
So this was being prepared before, and then you guys actually got to see the big one. So I can not only reference you back to that presentation, but I can just have it resent by Dr. Haiti, and you'll get to see all of the data.
I just, as a nurse, I look at a lot of research and I compare, you know, I compare.
You don't want to see four out of five dentists, right? You want to see the number, I got it.
Thank you.
I'll make sure we get that, okay.
Anybody else with a question? I had a question regarding the MOU with CCSU. And what does that mean vis-à-vis our CTE department? Do they need to be certified in connection with the courses that they'll be teaching at the high school? That so that they, that Central then does recognize them?
So I, another cheat, right? I don't like failing a test, I'm taking like an open book test. So that's why I brought my team. So I don't want to give a bad answer, so I have Dr. Haiti here, she can clarify.
And as you said, many of us are very interested in the CTE department, so.
Absolutely, we are.
So CCSU is just starting to build their dual enrollment program. So I think we're lucky to be that first partner, because we're going to help them build the program. So as you see in here, twenty-three, twenty-four, which is our next year, we're going to be working on certifying teachers. So the idea here is, we're going to look at the curriculum they teach at CCSU and the curriculum we teach here. We're going to talk about what the certification looks like, so that our teachers can actually teach it at Windsor High School, and students are able to get credit at, you know, from CCSU. So next year, it's all a planning year and a certification year in order for us to be ready to start offering dual enrollment classes in our CTE department in the following year, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Halleck?
Thank you. Going back to Sage Park, I noticed on the iReady scores that forty percent of our students were two or more grade levels behind them going into high school. So that was a concern.
Where did you see that?
For me.
Were you looking at exactly?
It was on the iReady scores a couple weeks ago when we got.
Oh, the presentation.
Right, the presentation.
Did you? I would like more, because I think that was repeated before, and I just want to be clear, because, you know, just for the public. We have the public. Could you share, Dr. Haiti, because I keep hearing the two, three years behind?
So the forty percent of students who are at grade level, that means we've got sixty percent who are not. So the sixty percent could be students who are right before grade level, could be one year before grade level, or two or more years before grade level. And then one thing you have to keep in mind when you look at iReady, so it's one assessment. So if you look at the end-of-year iReady, students in six through eight have taken that assessment after two weeks of state assessing. So we took S-BAC and then NGSS and then iReady. So naturally, you know, we would not, I mean, students could be reading, for example, or doing math at grade level, but then when they take iReady, they show that they are a year or more behind grade level. So that's why when we look at data, we look at different data points, so we try to triangulate our data in order to really make sure that we're making decisions, not just based on one day, one data point.
It just felt concerning to me, because I thought the red, those students were two or more years behind, but maybe that's not accurate?
No, so sixty percent is yellow and red. So you have a group of those kids who are one year behind, or not even a full year behind, between one and zero. And then the red is students who are between maybe two, two and a half, and one. So it's a range of, it's a range. It's not, not all of the sixty percent of the kids are two or more years behind.
Okay.
But it's definitely, Ms. Halleck, an area of concern. And so I'll reach back to the gains, as I said, celebrating the small things in the elementary schools. If students are, and this is what I said to my leads, if students are leaving each grade on grade level or above, then you incredibly reduce the number of students who could possibly be, you know, a grade level or multiple grade levels behind. So what's happened for some time, and I can tell you it happens across the nation, right? If a student leaves one place and they're not quite on grade level, the further they go, the further behind they get, and it just starts to compile. Especially once they hit third grade and up, when they're reading for information, and they never really learn to read really well, and they're struggling leaving second grade, they're really going to struggle third grade. So you're spending a lot of time trying to play catch-up with them, and it's almost like a steamroller. And I've shared different points with this board and the public. So as, you know, when I opened High School Lincoln Hartford as principal, I had students sent to me as ninth graders and tenth graders, that's what they were called on paper. The reading levels were fourth grade, fifth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade, they were all over the place. And so we had to, like, look at each student individually and do very specific interventions to move students, you know. Thankfully, I had an incredible staff that worked really hard, the students worked hard. And so we were able to see students gain two and three years pretty quickly. But again, that wasn't a whole system, that was just four hundred students in one school with some very focused programming, and a lot of latitude from the board for me to do that focused programming. But yeah, it's, as she said, I just wanted to be clear, like, we have students that are in a range, behind still, nevertheless, as you're saying. But they're not all, I don't want people to think we have all these kids that are two and three years sitting behind. We don't necessarily have that, but we have some, and it's just a reality that we're working on.
Sure.
You all done?
I'm all set, yes.
Okay. Mr. Walliston?
Yeah, just a reminder that these are students who have missed two years of school, almost, because of the pandemic. So I'd like to recognize the fact that there's growth in this area as well, coming from thirty-seven to forty percent. I'd just like to encourage us to focus on what we did correct to get that growth and then chase the good and leave the bad. If there's anything that didn't work, we throw it out, and what did work, we just grow and build on top of that. But the main thing I really wanted to say was the first point you mentioned, which was accessibility to the superintendent through an open-door policy. There's a show I've been watching on Netflix, Queen Charlotte. There is this, it's all right, kind of a chick flick kind of thing, but it's all right. So there's this idea they had, the Queen had, of breaking down the castle walls. And I feel like that's kind of what you're doing here as well with your open-door policy. It's less of the big superintendent behind the desk in the office and making yourself more accessible, and having the coffee talks, and having all these valuable quality time for people to feel heard and just be able to communicate with you. And you in turn learn a lot from the peoples in your staff. So I think that's a great initiative. Thank you.
I'm doing like Queen Charlotte, okay? I might have to watch that. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Is that it?
Back, oh, Ms. Halleck. Back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I think, again, we have this, I know the public can go online, but this is available. But I think it's completely up to you, but my thought was to give the highlights here.
So it'll go a little faster with the next sections. I just thought, thinking about the questions, which are great questions, right? When you're talking about, anytime you're talking about school stuff directly, people are really extra interested. The next are going to be a little bit more broad, so I will not read all those bullets. But I thought, if I skip the school, then I didn't know how my leaders are going to feel, like, "Why'd you skip my school?"
You invited them here.
Right, so I wanted to make sure everyone felt the love. Okay. So the second area, organizational management. Superintendent of Windsor Public Schools ensures the success and achievement of all students by managing organizational systems and resources with a safe, high-performing learning environment. So basically, these bullets here address all the things that were done, including regular meetings with the State Department of Education and our safety protocols that we continue to put in place. The actual pandemic, as we've grown to know it since 2020, has been deemed not a pandemic. Although we know COVID's not going away, and I know our resident nurse, she probably knows a lot more than any of us, but... but it's here to stay, but we're not considered to be in a pandemic. But we continue to do all the things we need to do, and that would be the work of Mr. Chuck Waterfield and his team across the district under D.A.L. Batchelder. So the DACO, and I just wanted to, Lord, I don't want to open up this can of worms, but I'm a, here we go. So I got beat up last year, and I was really upset about DACO buses because I asked my colleagues around the country, so did any of y'all fix the bus problems in y'all states? And they're like, no, and when you fix it, could you let us know? So DACO buses, I believe, got better. I only heard from Ms. Cantor twice this year. So I'm taking that as a measure of success. That's, I gotta take the victories, like Ms. Jorgensen told me, I gotta just take all little victories, right? So hopefully, DACO, we've seen improvement. I know that I've met with them, with Ms. Batchelder, nowhere near as many times as she has, and I don't want to. And they seem sincere and wanting to fix the issues. And I know Ms. Batchelder is not always that nice bubbly person you guys get to see, so they don't want to deal with her either. So they were really working on it, and I know there was like software program changes and, you know, so that stuff has been continuously worked on, they're going to continue to work on it. So we should not see, as we move forward, the issues that we've seen. Also, I'm hoping that with a change in some of the governmental, that's my little political piece there, actions, there won't be so much money around and everybody won't feel like they don't have to work. I did say it, I did, and we can find some bus drivers. I'm just going to have to say it like I gotta say it.
My decent.
I was trying to say it as one of my principles, I was like, you're not clapping. And we got some updates coming to our HVAC system this year, finally, this building will get some updates. It hasn't been updated since the 50s. So I'll leave it up to you guys now, questions?
I just wanted to.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing, when they declared a pandemic and they, I believe they made the bus drivers get the vaccine, so you had less people driving buses, even though they might have had COVID or they didn't feel they would need to get it. So that created a big problem in itself. And then once you lose people, they're not coming back because they have a job somewhere else, so I just want to comment on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, the rest, I'm not going to read all those bullets, I just want, I'll just let people ask questions.
Okay, I think you can move on to the next section.
So next section, community relations. Superintendent of Windsor Public Schools ensures success and achievement of all students by collaborating with families and other stakeholders who respond to diverse community interests and needs to mobilize community resources. So I think a big positive for us has been our district communications coordinator continues to do an outstanding job facilitating the many events held by the district. This individual uses, it's Ms. Gill, I won't say her name, Gianna Gill. This individual uses the district website and social media outlets to communicate with community members. She also maintains a digital backpack and approves and uploads flyers from the community members. We have also received like awards and recognition for our social media presence, and I, I share without any shame that, again, colleagues from across the country, when I share my conferences, you know, what we're doing, you know, they, they take, we share from each other, but it's nice to know that, you know, I'm not just going to a conference and I'm just taking and coming back here with stuff, but we have stuff that we're doing here in Windsor that folks across the country are like, hey, I like that. Christine Morales, our coordinator for Office of Family and Community Partnerships, is currently at a conference in Philadelphia, and she was texting me, I guess while she was in her sessions, and she was like, the coffee talks are a hit, whatever people are there. So I'm like, I don't know, maybe I need to trademark those coffee talks, because I might need to look for a retirement income from coffee talks. But it's good to know that we're doing something that other people are benefiting from. So this year, a thing I do want to point out, as Ms. Gill had me, it was her idea, start a podcast. So Chat and Chill with Super Hill, some of you may have heard of it. It's actually become pretty popular, she does all the metrics and pays attention to all that. I just am the talent, and I get on and do the podcast. So I don't really know what's happening, that's, that's, I'm not saying talent like that, is you're the talent, is the person doing stuff like the singer. She's puffy, and I'm just out there singing, so clearly, Puffy doing more work. But it's great because the community, you know, when I'm around the town or anywhere, even outside the town, folks are like, you do that podcast. I really don't think about it like that, like, I think it's a great opportunity to highlight staff and students and things that we're doing in our district, but people are really paying attention to it. So it's just another opportunity for us to connect with the public. And then my, your regular meetings that we have with the board, you know, our executive committee meetings to plan our Board of Ed meetings, our Board of Ed meetings, and then, of course, the work that we all have done, we've all attended CAE's conference. I think it's great that we, as a, a board and the superintendent, we attend CAE. Even if we don't agree with everything CAE, you know, Spousler says, I think it's important that we're there and we show a united front and presence, and we're learning the latest things that are going on with school board work and superintendent work. So I'll leave that, because that's a lot of bullets. Okay, go to the next one?
Yep.
Okay, and the fourth one, personal and professional qualities and relationships. Superintendent of Windsor Public Schools ensures the success and achievement of all students and staff by modeling ethical behavior and integrity. I will read this. I will continue to fight for what is right and resourceful for all of my students and staff. I've made that clear in my first year, and that's also, as I said, been my character throughout my career since 1992. Whatever's right for my people, I'm, I'm going to fight for it. I believe leaders must be the role model for all behaviors and actions desired of the followers. So if I'm going to ask my leaders to do anything, then I must be willing to do it myself. Today, we went to get ice cream with my fifth grade student advisory group. I highly recommend you guys all do that, make sure you bring at least $100, because ice cream is not cheap. There are no 50 cent cones anymore. And Ms. Williams came up to the van as I was sitting in the driver's seat and said, are you really going to drive the van? I'm like, well, how are we going to get there? So I've done it all as a superintendent, as a principal, as a vice principal, as a teacher, it doesn't matter. I pick up trash, right, I have empty trash, I've swept floors, I've buffed floors, yes, I have, and I can drive a van. It is okay, we do what we got to do for our children and to support them. I believe if I hold myself to very high standards personally and professionally, then my expectations for others will be high as well, and then they can't be questioned. So I'm constantly pushing my leaders to look for ways to grow themselves. I'm not going out to earn another degree, I am done doing that, but I am constantly reading, I am constantly trying to grow, whether it's books I'm just reading on my own at home, or talking to other professional colleagues locally or nationally. I'm always trying to gain new insights and understandings. I also mentor potential leaders, I'm constantly called from across the country. So there's someone who's just mentoring in Denver Public Schools, I'm called from across the country to help mentor leaders. And I think that, you know, that's not just a feather in, in Dr. Hill's cap, that's a feather in Windsor's cap, because they're calling Windsor, Connecticut, to get advice from the leader here. And I get to talk about the work I do with the leaders and the staff here in Windsor to help this person or these people grow in their particular areas. I understand the reputation I've built, not only in Windsor, but also across the state and nation. My views and professional takes on many educational and leadership topics are sought after mainly because I am seen as a leader of integrity and honesty, and I want to keep that, that's my brand. When they say, who's Terrell Hill, they're like, he gonna tell it like it is. I know maybe that's not the beloved approach from some people, but it's worked for me for all these years, and it's my brand. And it's what people across this country and this state look for when superintendents or the commissioner or the governor's office want an honest opinion, and they call me, they're going to say, we know, we're going to get an honest opinion from Dr. Hill. And I like that, and I want to keep that going. And again, as I lead Windsor, and that's the reputation that I have, that's the reputation we have here in Windsor. So when we ask for things as Windsor Public Schools, I would like to say, we, we get a lot of exceptions and privileges as a district when some other people don't. And I have other districts ask me to say, hey, can you use your capital and ask for us? So sometimes I have to be Mikey for other people. And I understand my most important role is to be primary ambassador for Windsor Public Schools. That goes without saying, love the district. I've been working in the district, saved my five years in Hartford since 2002. As I've said many times, I moved my family to the district and built a home here in 2006. I don't plan on leaving, that's up to you guys, but I love the district. So when I go out, I'm always representing Windsor, and so I am, it's what it is. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to share this, questions?
Thank you. I think what we'd like to do now, and part of it could be questions, I'd like to go back and forth, exchanging on both sides of the aisle here, if you will, thoughts about the evaluation, as to the evaluation. Mr. Lockhart?
So the way, the way Mr. President just stated, what he's going to allow us to do is to make comments back and forth overall. And then after that, I would ask, with support of Mr. Panos, to have a brief recess, just to make sure that we're on the same page with the motions, and then come forth in, in a unified front as much as possible.
So I'd like to start with Ms. Klase, and then go to, after that, to Mr. Halleck.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you for the advanced copy of your comments. I just want to say that I really appreciated seeing this year, that the focus on children first from you and all your staff on academics and social emotional learning. And as examples, I really love the data analysis in the dads programs, where you see that all these active men in our school system, dads and folks, so that's been great. I think you have the right team in place with a focus on children. I think they're smart, high achieving, they love their work, and they care about their work. And I think that's a result of your leadership with them. I also appreciate that you give them independence to do their work and support professional development for everybody and accountability. I think your engagement and inclusion in the district has been outstanding. I see with children, parents, staff, and the community and all those facets, it's really a breath of fresh air. I don't see, think you see that in other school systems. I think I've, I know people who've moved back to Windsor from towns to say, I've never had that kind of engagement from the superintendent of schools or even the class, the teachers that we have here in Windsor. And I really appreciate the transparency. I think your communication is transparent. I know some people might not think about it that way, but I think you're also responsible in your communication, which I think is different than just telling everybody everything that happens. Meeting with the unions is a good example of how you have good, build, try to build good relationships and keep people, people well informed. And I really like that you pay attention what to the boards, to what the board has asked for. So we have our little pet projects, mine was just school safety, so you created a way for me to hear about that. That kept everybody in the building safe, but still, I understood there was a plan. So I really appreciate everything you've done, and I think you've had a banner year. And I, even this moment that you mentioned your staff and their work so many times in your evaluation tells me something, and I appreciate all the efforts of everybody here and you, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Halleck?
Thank you. Overall, I think it's, you know, it's been a good, it's been a good year. You know, you're, Dr. Hill, you've been very busy, your, your staff has been very, very busy with different projects. You know, is there room for improvement? Sure, you know, we can always get better, as you mentioned, we can always grow. You know, but I think we're, we're moving, for the most part, on most things in the right direction, and I think that's good for, for Windsor, you know, so hopefully, we can keep that going. You know, you've, overall, you managed the district, I think, fairly well, so. I think we're, you know, I think going, like, like I said, I, you know, you know, I agree that we're going in the right direction, and I think, you know, we'll, we can continue to, we will continue to, and to make those improvements and, you know, so. That's really all I have to say at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Wallaston?
So I do believe as well, it's been a, a great year. And I'll, I'll even go as far as saying, nothing less than a miracle, right? We cut from a little bit over 6% on our operating budget down to 4.8, right? 4.8, something like that, right? But we moved the district forward, and, and that's amazing, to say the least. You know what I'm going to say next, though, right? I'm not saying we should waste money, but I'm, I'm very impressed that we were, that, not we, you and your team were able to do this wondrous thing. I'm just looking forward in the future to not waste money, but entrusting your vision, just investing where we need to invest to push our district forward. And I do believe you know exactly what we have to do, you know exactly where it has to be. You've done amazing, you've done amazing, you've done amazing. And I, I continue to trust your vision, and I believe in the vision that you have set forth for this district. I'm just scared of what happens in other districts, which becomes a culture of high accountability and, and low reward or low compensation for some people. And that's just a whole nother can of worms in itself. I'm not, I'm also not saying to pay people a lot to do a little or to do nothing, but just in speaking and investing in the people who are truly doing the work and the people who are helping you to push your vision forward. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed with all you continue to do, the, the marketing, the podcast, the coffee chats. We could go on about the unconventional things that are coming out of Windsor that we are doing that no one else has done until they've seen us do it. Or we went to a CAE summer leadership convention and started telling people about coffee chats, and now we see all these coffee chats around Connecticut. So, so, yup, no percentage, right? You need to trademark it, but I'm, I'm very pleased overall, and I'm just looking forward to, you know, maybe a little bit more aggressiveness in the budget, you know, definitely going to be hounded down on you. Yeah. That's all I have, though, no problem.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I know you did a good job on the budget, and you even decreased my most favorite topic, DACO cost. By reducing the number of buses because parents are still driving their kids to school. I think you offer a lot to your staff for the professional development, and you always ask them to look for other ways to increase students' knowledge, and you've come up with other ways to help them. I like the dads program that you have, I think that means a lot, especially for those kids that don't have father roles. It's more supervision and more of grounding. I think SEL has helped the students because of what's gone on with the COVID virus and just their overall well-being in the family environment. I would definitely like to see the scores go up, I know you know that, I'm a real stickler on that, because you know how I am, because I know how you know, how I am with my child. And I really see that we need a big improvement, and I think if parents really insist on their children learning that they take part every single day, and their children doing the homework, because what you learn from kindergarten through second grade will get you right through if you just keep knowing your math and, you know, add addition and subtraction, and that leads to your multiplication and division, then it brings you right into algebra. I think that's really important, and the reading every day, and as long as you can capture their attention, I think it's great. I love the fact that you still offer strings at the younger level and band, I think it's really important. And I'm glad to see DACO is back on track.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you're next.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Hill, for providing us with so much context and information. Prior to the meeting, it's difficult to, I know when you're doing performance review, to just kind of bring everything together that you've done in the last year and remember all the high points, but also, to your point, and as you mentioned, Ms. Jorgensen's point, to, to understand it doesn't have to be a huge win to be a huge win, that makes any sense. So I appreciate even the little things that may seem like nothing to you and your team that, that makes all the difference to our parents and our kiddos, so I appreciate it. I also appreciate the data, because, you know, everything that your team has shared with us and out, all works together. with us throughout all works together with how everything's going on, with how your leadership is going, and I think oftentimes, we, we get caught up with test scores, and that's great, too, but I also want us to lift up, as a full board, to just remember, to Mr. Wallison's point, that these students and our staff have gone through a global pandemic, and so that's necessary to, to remember when we're, we're thinking about how difficult it is from every standpoint for all of our stakeholders. So, I appreciate, again, the, the clarity, the data, and, and your leadership throughout. I just don't see a lot of superintendents posting coffee chats and having such an open door policy of transparent, transparency, so I, I fully support everything that you're doing, and I'm happy to see.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, through you, Dr. Hill, like, like the board and you, our primary focus is, and always will be, culture and academic performance. So, first and foremost, I want to say thank you for actually having this valuation open session. This is very abnormal, and I believe this is providing leadership and professional development to your leadership, your, your leadership team, to show them when they're prepared to take that next step of what they have to endure. So, for you to do that alone is, is nothing but marvelous. People, you know, leadership matters, and you know what? He's not only talking it, he's doing it. For me, there's no surprises. You have an open door policy with any board member here, so I'm not surprised by anything that you've said today, because you've been saying it at every single board meeting, and every single committee meeting, and everything has been data-driven, and it's been shared. So, there's no, this, this valuation was, it was no, no surprises for me at all. I just want to thank you for engaging this board with difficult, difficult discussions. I know you and I, the only time we really disagreed has been during the budget process, where I don't mind spending money on high-quality things where there's gonna be a result. I don't like wasting money, but I don't mind investing money, and I think that's where you and I have only differed on, and so, to Mr. Wallison's point, I would definitely love to see a more robust budget, but that's, that's a town discussion. That's not a Dr. Hill discussion. So, if the town comes together and say, "We're willing to invest in these particular areas," and encourage the superintendent to move down that road, then I can understand you going down that path. But I truly understand what you've done, why you've done it, and how you drive performance. You've definitely, to that point, you drive accountability and performance to a point where it's very irritating to some folks, and that's okay. It's okay to be held accountable, because I'm held accountable with my job. I hold my 25 employees accountable, and people, my boss, hold me accountable. If I don't do my job, I don't have a job. And it's, it's just that cut and dry. So, I truly understand that we're in the business of educating children, and to, we're here to utilize the human capital, and with the tools to the best of our ability, and I think you've, you've done that phenomenally. I also understand that it's my role as a board member to be a primary ambassador to the school system, so I just want to say thank you to you, Dr. Hill. I want to say thank you to any, everybody that's up underneath your leadership, everybody that's employed in this district, all the way down to the janitor, all the way down to the person that cuts the grass, all the way down to the para. Everybody has a role in what's going on in this district, and it starts with you, Dr. Hill. We only hold you accountable. We don't hold any other employee in this district accountable. We can have any opinion in the world. It doesn't mean a hill of beans. At the end of the day, we hold the superintendent accountable, and I'm just very thankful of the job you've done. Not only you've talked the talk, but you've walked that walk, and at times, we do disagree, but that's okay. At the end of the day, we're here for the children and not for our own personal agendas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Panos.
Thank you. You know, on the plus side, I think you've increased the trade course to the technical courses, and I think in the budget, it was a, a fairly good job. Let's see, I'm kidding. I appreciate that you started reporting the weekly numbers of fights that are at the middle in the, in the high school. I would appreciate a bit more data, you know, on that, and on what the resolutions are, of that sort of thing, but, you know, what, what was the disposition, what was the conclusions and all that sort of thing? Now, I think, though, that we still have a long way to go with regard to, you know, student performance. This is, the results are interesting here, and I appreciate that, but it does indicate, you know, that at this, you know, from the data that was presented from the iReady, which is very interesting. It's all we have. We don't have the SBAC right now. I guess we're gonna be doing that in the, in the fall, and, you know, it just indicates some pretty serious lax, probably end of school year with a lot of kids really not at, at level, and so is that as the years go by, it gets worse, you know, because it starts off fine at the, the elementary, very low elementary, but then the middle elementary, it begins to grow, and then by the eighth grade, you really have a large percentage, and that indicates that they're showing up at the high school, and, you know, quite a bit behind in the expecting them to do the work. So, you know, I'm disappointed in that, and, but it tracks the SBAC. It also, it also tracks, you know, you know, you would say, "Well, the, the data went up, you know, for the SATs in the spring." You would expect that, you know, from what it was, the SATs, that, that is expected over the year, that you're going to improve. You take a, take a test in the fall, and you take, in the winter, you know, you're going to get an improvement over the year, but, you know, the level is, of course, below 1,000, so it's really not a very good score, you know, so I see a lot of problems there. I don't know, you know, I have had, you know, criticisms, you know, of the way things are organized for this, you know, because after all, if we have the kids going through school, and they're not up, you know, in the fourth grade and the fifth grade, and they just push ahead, yet we don't, we don't have any solution for that, you know? I don't see it. So, that's, that's a failure, I would say. And so, you know, and I would just say that, you know, changes, some of the changes here, you know, we've been over them, you know, as we've argued, the changes of, I've been disappointed in, you know, what, some of the, like, like the history, what was the history courses and things like that. And I just want to say that, you know, for, I, I see a fair amount, you know, you, you could do a lot more to communicate with us. For example, well, you know, it's our, that little, we had a dust-up here on the insert, the conference. I, I made a request, and you didn't, you know, just tell us what, you know, you did with the, when you went to a certain concert, I mean, a conference called the, the National Conference, or, or, I was saying, Center for Educational Research and Technology. And I made a simple request, and this turned into a big rift between us here. So, that was disappointing, to say the least. It's a simple request. It's cost $6,500, you know, to, that we pay for that. It also tells, you know, you're away for a week, and it, so there's expenses involved and all that sort of thing, and you didn't want, and yet, I'd just like to point out to you that in your contract, it says on Section 8 of the contract, outside activities, in Part A, it says that such outside activities, we will expect periodic reports. So, it's, it's in the contract. I, I made a request that was consistent. Excuse me.
After he finishes, you, you-
Yeah, you can-
I don't think you're asking a question. You're just stating.
No, I'm just stating it. That's all. I'm not asking you to know. No, I'm just-
That's fine.
No, I haven't, and it, and it says that, it furthermore says in Section, you know, 8B in the contract, that it's going to extra conferences other than the ones listed there, which are the Hartford area, you know, student, the, the Connecticut. Let me, let me show it to you.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes. He, if, if, he's reading from the contract. He, I heard what he said, 8B.
Yeah, let's go here to-
I'm, I'm looking at 8B, and that's nowhere close, so maybe I'm not having-
8A, 8A, that's what we, excuse me. Hold on a second. Let me find the contract. Outside activities, 8A. I'm sorry, if you look at, if, if I-
8A?
Yeah, it says-
No, I, I'm not sure what contract you're looking at. I'm looking at the contract that was-
Is this the contract here? This, you signed this? This is-
I'm just gonna show, I'm just gonna show-
Because I, this, this is what I have for 8A. This is-
Here.
Termination.
What? Oh, no, oh, no, 8, oh, what is?
I think you said 8A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You're right. It is-
Could you say it again, please?
The outside, let me skip it. No, it's 6. I'm sorry. I'm reading the, I'm reading the 6 as an 8. Sorry.
All right, so, so, so my, so my point of order is, is that he's reciting the con- Through you, Mr. President, he is reciting the contract to make his point about the cert conference, correct?
Correct.
Right.
And that's the discussion that you're allowing only, correct?
Correct.
That's right. So, it, it says here that, you know, that in the first contract, in the first part of it, 6, I'm sorry, 6A, superintendent will be active. It's understood. They act in local, state, regional, and national educational and professional activities as a leader. Out-of-pocket expenses is provided for in the district contract for such activities will be borne by the board, and the board will expect periodic reports on these activities. In the Part B, it gives the board shall pay the full cost of superintendent's professional association members in the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the American Association School Administrators, and the Hartford Area Superintendent's Association. In addition, the board shall pay for other professional civic group memberships, which the superintendent feels are appropriate to maintain and improve professional skills and community obligations, provided that these memberships are approved in writing in advance by the board president. And I don't believe that, you know, I don't have no evidence that this is done. So, you know, I think it's, you know, my request for this sort of thing, you know, in my questioning of the, in the budget, the questioning of this, you know, you took issue with my questioning, why, you know, why do, why are you a member of this? Well, it's, it's in the contract that it's, it's not one of the things that are accepted. It's not one of the, you'd have to have special permission. It would, board president would have to come to this. And so, so anyway, you know, I'm saying, we had, I mean, I've-
Let me just have him finish, and then you can respond.
Sure, okay. Go ahead. What?
I just want to understand. I'm, I'm sorry. So, let me just, I think I'm asking for a point of order, just so I understand for clarification purposes, because my understanding is here, we're here for the evaluation, that Mr. Panos is making a point around that what he believes is a point of, that he asked for, that, that has resulted in a, a feedback about his, Dr. Hill's performance that's not gonna land favorably. I think that's what you're trying to say. You asked for something. He didn't respond to that in the way you wanted. It's contractually obligated, and so as a result, in the performance of evaluation, you have something to say to him.
That, well, that, that was it.
But what I wanted, it didn't really go any further than that, right? Because now we're looking at the contract and interpreting the language. I'm confused, then, about the agenda point. That's all I'm trying to say.
Confused about?
If it's going further, like, if we're gonna sit here and look at the contract, because if so, it should be an agenda item, and I'd like to have a copy of the contract and have a conversation about that. Otherwise, it's, we're giving feedback to the superintendent only about what our position is on what he's reported. Is that, are you, like, are you going forward on this point, or?
No, I'm, I'm offering here that, that, you know, part of the, part of this evaluation is to say, you know, where in what area he can improve, and, and I mean, you were all privy to the email exchange, you say, which, you know, was, was rather pointed, if you would like.
I'd like to offer, have you-
Go ahead.
Mr. President, have you satisfied her point of order?
I, I have.
May I offer a point of information?
Okay, yeah.
And it's, it's in relation to Mr. Panos's comment, if I'm, if I'm allowed.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Panos is correct that that is a provision in 6B, but what I would like to offer is, I've been sitting on this Board of Education since January of 2012, and we have never asked any superintendent to offer any reports of any conference at any time. That's not to say that was not the right of the board of any time, but this is a boiler plate contract that we have used, at least during my entire time as the, as a board member, and we are now asking this superintendent to do so. Now, if this is gonna be the standard moving forth, that's fine, because within the contract, Mr. Panos, in theory, in reality, you are correct. It's in the contract. We have a right as the board to ask that. It has not been historical perspective for us to ask a superintendent to do that. So, I just offer that for the board.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, point of information?
Mr. Wallison?
So, as Board Member Klase mentioned, we all don't have a copy of the, the contract, so it is kind of unfair to have this discussion right now, but I will say that it really is the interpretation of this line that, that it boils down to. Mr. Panos, this is your interpretation of the line? What I read here, it says, "And the board will expect periodic reports on these activities." This could very well mean, "Today I went here." That is a report on that activity. It doesn't mean he has to give a summary. It doesn't mean he has to give you notes. It's a periodic report on the activity. It does not say, "Write down a five-page summary and give you notes on what he learned today." I don't see that here in the contract. A periodic report, unless, I mean, we can flush out, or maybe we can decide one day to go into the contract and, and try to figure out if we need more information on this, but I see periodic report on these activities.
You want him-
What?
I don't see summaries.
Back to you to, to finish your comments, and then I will allow Dr. Hill an opportunity to respond.
The issue was a response, which, which I think requires improvement on part of, of Dr. Hill. That, that's my point. It was, you know, I didn't intend for this, you know, to, to, to be, but I was surprised at the refusal to, and, and the strength of which this was made, and the, and the subsequent comments that were made. So, so that's, that's what I'm saying. There's that, that I'm, I'm, I'm saying that this, your, your reaction to a simple request was, was, I think, inappropriate, and, and therefore, I, you know, I, I think that's an area that needs improvement, and so, and I, you know, I just happened to come across this as I looked at it. You know, I didn't go looking for this, but, and it's true, it's exactly, it says, traditionally, we have not requested this, but I didn't know, you know, I didn't know about it. All it was, was a simple request. You went, went to someplace that costs money, and, and I, it's up to, it's up to the board to make sure that we understand where, where the money is being spent, and what's being spent for, and I couldn't get two words out of you, or what this answer is.
Mr. Panos, I think you've made your point.
Go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Hill?
So, I, I understand Mr. Panos's point. I, I will, for the record, I wanted to know that it was, it was out of order, because this wasn't what we were doing tonight, but it's okay. But I want the public to hear everything, because he laid forth some things that I think the public hears, and are not sure. So, I want to make sure everyone's clear, and we're not gonna make excuses. So, I was asked to give a report on a conference I went to, as Mr. Panos said. Correct. And I asked, I didn't refuse. I said, "Well, I'm not understanding. Why do you want this report from me?" And it was never asked of anyone else. Mr. Panos said he didn't know Dr. Cook was going to the same conference. So, since I became superintendent, I have yet to join an organization through Windsor Public Schools. I have not. I've joined organizations with my own money since I've been superintendent. The organization in question, the conference I went to, Dr. Cook joined the organization in 2015. Mr. Panos was on the board. Dr. Cook reported his attendance at this conference. Dr. Cook put his attendance in his annual reviews. Mr. Panos never asked any questions about his attendance at the conference. The cost of this conference was exactly the same in 2015, 16, 17, 18- The cost of this conference was exactly the same in 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and currently, July 1, '23. I asked, as I was sitting with Dr. Cook at the conference in New Orleans, were you ever asked this at all? Again, not being defiant, simply getting clarification. Because when a person is asked to do something that predecessors in the same position were never asked to do, it begs a question. Therefore, I inquired of the person who most recently sat in this position prior to me obtaining the seat. He said, "Absolutely not." So I couldn't understand why for six years, Mr. Panos had no questions about the $6,500 spent, but when Dr. Hill became superintendent and then joined the same organization, which was already in the contract, because I didn't bring it up, now the $6,500 became an issue. That's why I said, "So I'm wondering why you're asking this." And I said, "I feel like this is harassment and discrimination," because the definition is, "When you treat someone differently from someone else who was doing the same thing." Mr. Lockhart just clarified, since 2012, that's his knowledge base, although Mr. Panos and I have been associated with this board much longer, because we both go back to Dr. Fieser, and he goes back prior to Dr. Fieser. No superintendent has been asked to give a report. It's not a problem. I've always shared what I've learned at insert conferences. In fact, I've implemented programs in the district from insert. However, I noted that this is not the first occasion, but I continue to receive different treatment, and Mr. Panos took exception to that. Those are the facts. I never declined, nor did I say I would not do something. I understand the way you feel, so if the sum total of my evaluation and your estimation, Mr. Panos, is that even? I understand, we know where this goes, but I cannot have the public believing a partial story. You knew, you were on the board, somehow you told me I didn't know Dr. Cook was part of that organization. I don't understand that, as he was part of it for six years prior to me being on it. And it was listed in the budget book every single year.
Excuse me. Let me just respond.
I think you've, I think you've each had your interpretation of this, I don't think.
Well, he added, he added that I must have known, and there's no, no evidence whatsoever, that Dr. Cook sent an, sent an email to us to inform us that he was going to this conference. So I had no, it is not true that I knew that he was, that Dr. Cook was going to the conference. In fact, none of my prior caucus members, Michaela Thistle, or, or anyone else, had any knowledge about insert.
Okay, I think, I think this is enough of this back and forth, you've really had your opportunity to, so I'm, I'm going to cut you off at this point.
All right.
And it, and it obviously, it's something that you've, you know, believe goes to his evaluation and how you view that, and I think you've made yourself well-known, and you and Dr. Hill have gone back and forth of this in public as well at a different time, and so I think we need to put this to bed. I know you also didn't vote during the budget for, for insert training as well. So you've expressed in many ways, issues about this.
Let me point out that the first time that we heard about this in detail was just two years ago. That's not all these times. We did not hear about.
Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut off any, any more discussion about this. Luckily, I, I get to go last here, and then we'll hopefully have a short, a short break. I, I believe in, very supportive of Dr. Hill, first when he was hired. We wanted someone who had a broad breadth of experience. Dr. Hill had been a teacher, a vice principal at Windsor High, right in our own district. He's starting a, a brand-new school from start, a business school in Hartford High School, Inc. He also came back to Windsor in our central office as an assistant superintendent in charge of HR, and has become a superintendent. So he, he knows most of the positions, and is, as others have said, not only talk the talk, but walk the walk. He lives in town here. I, he's mentioned before, he's got a nice house, he pays taxes here as well. His children have gone to Windsor Public Schools, and hopefully one will graduate in another year from Windsor High School. Last year, he told us academically, "We need to do better." He's looked at the numbers from prior years, and told us last year, actually, as well, that he was going to send a letter to all families, saying, "All of us in the school," and I reiterated at commencement, that board members included, "Everybody has to step up." Parents, students, teachers, staff, everyone. We've gone through a terrible period of time for a couple of years with the pandemic, and as great as our MTSS system is of figuring out when we have to do two, tier-two and tier-three interventions, we were seeing good students, historically good students, who were disconnected. And one of the great initiatives he had was bringing in Dr. Mallory, and setting up the SEO program, which is a model for the state. In this year's budget, he was able to actually push a couple of those positions into the regular budget. We know luck, this is our last year of federal funding, and we're hoping the state will come through with additional funds. Looks like they're doing something there at the Capitol positively, but we'll see where those numbers go. Again, as others have mentioned, his connections to the community. It's in a lot of the bullets that he had, the coffee talks, the Chat and Chill podcast, and his work on the budget to explain what it would be like to roll over the budget and how we could reduce some items, hold the line on a number of other items, and come out with a budget that, when we took it to the town council, they unanimously supported it. We didn't have to come back another day, they didn't ask for anything to be taken out. It went to referendum, and it was passed, so. And as, again, alluded to, when we've had certain issues, we've gone, and he mentioned, we've gone into executive session on safety plans, which we can't discuss in public, and on certain disciplinary matters, when the board wanted something a little more fleshed out of what was, was going on, and he accommodated that. So, overall, I'm very impressed with Dr. Hill's performance. And on that note, I'd like to see if there's a motion for a five-minute recess.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Wallison for a five-minute recess, seconded by Mr. Lockhart. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, are you able to vote for recess?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero zero, we're in recess till, let's say, eight forty-two. Seven forty, sorry, seven forty.
Seven forty-two.
By now, seven forty, seven forty-three.
Do you have the motion?
We're just, he does.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.